6:02 PM, so you know we're recording via Zoom, also streaming live through Facebook, and also through WCAT 12 also, okay, which is our local access network. If I can have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming. Got quite a crowd tonight. I didn't expect so many people, but it's good to see. All right, so the first thing we have on our agenda is a public hearing for the National Grid poll on Old Douglas Road. Where do we have this? Okay, we have somebody from National Grid here?
Yes.
Hi ma'am.
Hello.
How you doing?
Good.
Did you want to come on up, sit down?
Sure.
You could sit in Karen's seat tonight. What's your name?
Diane Claus, National Grid.
Okay. And where are we putting this poll?
So this is on Old Douglas Road, and it is just to take the place of a tree that the town wants to remove, that has a guy wire into it, so the poll's going, instead of where the tree is, to guy the existing street poll, poll nine.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to read, or I need to read the verbiage?
Yeah.
We should read it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to read it?
Sure. National Grid, I'm sorry, server. Mass Electric Company, doing business as National Grid, and Verizon New England Incorporated, require permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protective fixtures along and across the following public way. Old Douglas Road, National Grid to install one jointly owned stub pole, pole nine dash eight four. Guy span and guy plus anchor on Old Douglas Road, beginning at a point approximately 2,555 feet southeast of the center line of intersection of Old Westbrook Field Road, to replace the old tree guy that supports pole nine. Location approximately as shown on plan attached. Hope you have a plan.
I got a plan. So I have your plan.
I rode by, the pole is staked at the location, there are really no houses near there, so...
And it's just, there's an old tree that's coming down, and...
Correct.
It's to replace that?
Right.
So we could still support our, the wires that are in?
Right, the existing wires feed up a driveway to two houses, and that wire, right now, currently supports that span going up the driveways.
Very good.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
No, just, just like you said, the, the tree is holding the wire, taking down the tree.
Correct, we used to do tree guys years ago, and they're no longer allowed.
Oh, it was intentional.
Years ago, it was okay to...
To do it?
To guy to trees.
No, that's fine.
We haven't done it in like 20 years, so now they just don't...
Yeah, just want to make sure everybody understands.
Sure.
Know what we're doing.
Anything else?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody from the public have any questions?
Well, that's actually my property that's gonna be gone, the two houses they are talking about.
Hold on one second, sir. What's your name?
Kirk Nasi.
Kirk Nasi, and where do you live?
Two seventy-one Old Douglas Road. The, the property that's getting the two hour feeds from...
You're one of the houses?
Yeah, I'm one of the houses, and the pole is like right on the corner of my property. So there's nothing kind of done with the pole, you're not removing the pole or changing anything, it's just a guy wire.
The actual pole is marked for replacement, we look to see, because that tran, yeah, that transformer that...
The transformer pole, I think, was replaced last year because it was stolen, but the one that's up, there's another pole, like right on the very corner of my property, that's just beyond that pole.
Yeah.
They have marked, actually came up the driveway and wrote, you know, marked on the pole.
It does show for replacement, but those would be in the same exact place, that would be just maintenance, because those poles are old.
Okay, I think they'll be doing this at the same time that they did the guy wire and everything, it's just...
Yes, they'd be doing it all.
It's not gonna be...
They'd, they'd come along one day for the poles, and do like the three poles and any anchors needed, and then the transfer might be that day, or like a following day, so we'll see after.
Okay, so I shouldn't expect a lot of equipment or anything being dropped there?
No, and there would not be any outage associated to this.
That's what I was gonna ask, too.
Sure.
Okay.
So you have no other concerns on that?
I don't know.
Okay, all right. And just so everybody else knows, proper procedure would be to address the board, and then we would ask the question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You didn't know that, I just let you go with your question, but in the future, you always want to address the board, ask a question to us, and then we could ask them to answer it, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. But you're getting your answer, right? All right, does anybody else have anything else? No? Do you have anything to add?
No.
Tim, did you have?
I don't, I would just ask, is, is, was there anybody wishing to speak in opposition to this, to this? No.
Okay. I don't have any issues with it.
Me neither.
Okay. So I'll do a motion to approve the pole replacement in, on Old Douglas Road, and et cetera. What was the location again? What pole number is it?
Pole nine. Pole nine.
Pole number nine, okay?
Second?
All in favor?
Derek Dennis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes, your poll is approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. So that one's completed. All right, so the next one. I'm gonna open the hearing for Grip Cultivation LLC hearing on a marijuana, marijuana grow company in town here. Let me see here. All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may...
Yes, sir.
Just as a point of, of reference, since we don't have a selectman, IHOC'er here at the, at the meeting tonight, a recommendation would be to, to continue the hearing, so that whoever's here speaking in favor of the, of the, of the public hearing, selectmen, IHOC'er could also hear their testimony at a, at a later date and time, and participate in the, in the hearing, you know, moving forward if we kept the hearing open, and then allow for additional testimony in the future.
Okay. So we can hear?
Yes.
We'll hear what they have to say, what you guys are proposing, and you're probably not gonna get a decision tonight, because we're gonna have to think about it, and I do want, like Mr. Farrar said, we'd like to have Mr. IHOC'er here, one of our selectmen, so he can have his input on it also, okay? This is kind of a big deal, with marijuana coming to the community, and we want to make sure everybody has input and everybody's heard, okay? So who wants to speak tonight?
I have a presentation, did you want me to set it up, or do you? I can speak, I can just speak, that's fine.
What's your presentation?
I actually have a printed out copy, so here you go.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I have a couple of hats out, we're on back. Thank you.
Please identify who you are, and what your company is.
All right, hi, how you doing? My name is Albert Montgomery, I'm the CEO of Grip Cultivation, cultivation company. All right, thank you for having me. Thank you for having me, and thank you for taking the time to listen up, to listen to what we have to say this evening. Today Grip Cultivation, I'm the CEO, I mean, like I said, my name is Albert Montgomery, and we propose a cultivation at Fifty Pelosi Street. I'm also economic empowerment license holder, which means that I participated, and I was able to get an economic community priority license from the CCC, which is the Cannabis Control Commission, and they basically say that you have been nominated to have one of these speedy processes, and you are okay with us, and we like the work that you do in the community, so we okay you for this economic empowerment license. Grip cultivation is full vertical, specializing in cultivation, product manufacturing, genetic research, with basically the social equity and community in mind, the most important thing to us is community, and making sure we're giving back and doing things in the community. Myself, I, like I said, I'm the CEO, that's Eric Thompson, he's the lead cultivator. He has over fifteen years of cultivation experience. Myself, I have over twenty years of business experience, I have a BS in management, I'm in entrepreneurship, and a film degree. I also participated in the Massachusetts Social Equity Course, and in that course, they teach you how to basically stay in compliance with all the Massachusetts guidelines, they teach you how to operate with the Host Agreement, like what we're doing right now, and trying to work with towns and things of that nature. And also, they teach you how to speak to investors, and our investors are here today, and that's Jigga, Nadine, and Charles Kumbi here. They have been in business for over twenty years in the, in Massachusetts. Today, they op, they operate retail and distribution wholesale through across, across New England, and our site goals are for Fifty Pelosi Street, like I said, and we're looking to open it up in quarter two thousand three, first quarter two thousand three, specializing in, um, k- land cultivation, like I said, and, you know, a very strong security, strict odor migration mitigation, um, and then just very serious, you know, security and film and cameras to go along with the place. There's a picture, if you have the pamphlet, you can kind of see this is the location, if you look along. In that grip cultivation, we are very, like, like I said in the beginning, we are very community minded. I did take some time as an executive director for Boston Workers Alliance, which is a community, a nonprofit, which basically helped to fix quarry and things of that nature, so I, you know, I come from that background, and with that, that's how I was granted my economic empowerment license because of that. Some of the things that we want to do in our positive impact plan is basically a public safety commission for Warren Police and Fire Department, which is very important to us. We also want to do some things for the majority of our employees will be hired from the Warren area, and the Warren, and the Warren neighborhood, in the cultivation and manufacturing facility. And then we commit to hiring the majority of employees from the neighborhood as well. I'm open to answering any questions that you have.
Yep.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, yeah, any question you have, I'm pretty open to answering.
I, I like your initiative, but it's my meeting.
All right, yes, of course.
All right. So, welcome to the community.
Thank you for having me.
It's, it's great having you. You know, we're, we're trying to get more business into our community, and you guys are a business, and, you know, I understand the building that you guys are looking at is the old Hill Inc. building? That was something else that was going in there? You guys have taken over that building now?
I'm not a hundred percent sure what was there prior to us, but I'm...
Is that correct? That is accurate. Okay. All right. So the Hill, Hill Inc. thing is done? Because we have, I, we haven't received any saying that they were done?
That should probably be for a separate discussion, I guess, if, I can't speak towards their relationship with the town, okay? But they are in other types of negotiation, if I can say that.
Okay. All right. All right, so with your, with your business, I like that the fact that you're looking towards Warren as far as supporting our residents. You're bringing it to the community and saying, I want to hire, you, you want to hire your employees from our community, creating jobs for us.
Yes.
And thank you for taking that initiative, it's, it's not just the business that's coming in here and wanting to bring all their own people in here, and we don't get any of the benefits from it.
No.
So, and, now, can you talk to me about what you were talking about with the, how many employees would you be hiring?
So it's a three-phase build-out, so as time goes on, once we're at the finished phase, we're probably looking at a, you know, anywhere from twenty to forty employees, depending on how much we're manufacturing at that moment.
Okay.
You know, but definitely twenty full-time employees, you know, and then some part-time.
And how many are you looking from hiring from Warren?
For Warren, so we're looking sixty percent minimum, at least sixty percent, you know, because there's, there'll be some upper exelon, um, upper positions that are, you know, standard, like our grower, he's an executive grower, that, you know, we definitely have specialty positions that just may require, you know, someone who's not available within the Warren community. But for the most part, you know, like, I want to become a community, I want to live in Warren, so I want to be here, I want to know everything we do to come from Warren, you know, that's how I, you know, that's our vision for grip cultivation.
Well, we definitely a welcoming community, and anything to get our tax base up a little bit more, and, you know, create a better revenue for our community, you know, I'm liking. Of course, we're gonna have a lot more questions, you got, you're still going through the initial stage of this. We still have to do a host community agreement.
Yes.
Which we haven't done yet with them, so we're gonna have to come up with one of those, and I assume you're a lawyer, right?
I'm the lawyer.
All right. What's your name?
My name is Brent Bass, I will be assisting Grip Cultivation and their investors with all of the municipality needs that'll be required, i.e. the host community agreement, that's usually something that's undertaken, once we do have this first board of selectmen and the continued meetings, so that Rich can be here, that's when we will develop that plan and that agreement for your town council to review and look at it, make sure we're covering all the aspects from what is listed here tonight as important to the town. So that's why we have our initials, you know, meeting, so we get to hear your feedback on different things and different ideas that you would need in that host agreement.
And this isn't our first one. You know, we, we have, I have a lot of concerns with security as far as buildings, and with your product. Your product is desirable by a lot of people, and people will do bad things to get it sometimes. And we want to make sure that you protect it the best you can within that building, so there are a lot of things that, you know, we'll talk about as we go through to make sure you guys are as secure as possible, and close working with the police department, the chief back there, and you also have both chiefs back there, Chief Mallett for the police, and Chief Lavoy for the fire department. So you're gonna be working close with them to make sure everything's taken care of, if this goes forward, and that your product's protected, and it's within compliance, okay? Did you have any questions?
Yes, I have, I have two questions, very naive, very curious. Could you tell us a little bit about your timeline? How you see, how you see things happening?
Okay, so like I said at the beginning, like, once we get to the build-out stage and we're operational, it's actually a three-phase build-out, so it'd be phase one, which is seventy-five hundred square feet, phase two would be an additional twelve thousand square feet, and then phase three would be the final twenty-five thousand square feet, because the building is a total of fifty thousand square feet. So it's a three-phase build-out. The first phase is going through HC, going through the host community agreement, once we get through this phase, the next phase would be going with the CCC, and getting everything else, and getting our license, our pre-license, once our pre-license begins, that's when we would begin our build-out, and that's when I said quarter, first quarter twenty-three, if everything moves smooth and we can get to in front of the CCC before August, that could possibly happen. If we don't get in front of the CCC before August, we're looking at about eight to ten month build-out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And my second question is, how, what will be your daily operations in terms of traffic going in and out?
There should be no traffic except for the employees who come to work, you know, that's it. There's, there's no extra, there's no, we don't, you know, there's no one coming in here to buy anything, we're not serving the public, we don't, we don't deal with the public at all, we have no desire to deal with the public.
Are there trucks coming in and out to pick up merchandise?
So, as, as a cultivation in Massachusetts, you, you have the right to bring, to drop your product to them, so of course, we could, you know, put it in a vehicle and drop it to them, or vice versa, or they could come pick it up, you know, but, um, I, I don't, I don't foresee, what I foresee is us just kind of bringing people their product, you know, um, if there's something that, you know, that would make the town feel safer, we could speak about that, but, you know, that's the standard what most cultivation do at this point, in the city of, in the town of Massachusetts, in the state of Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Yes. Did you have anything?
Sure, I, I just would be curious to, to know, to piggyback off of, of, of Selectman Velez's comments, was the, the, the trucks that would come in and out of the facility to, to make deliveries, are we talking like eighteen-wheelers, or what, what type of...
I doubt it would be a truck, because marijuana is usually not that big and heavy, so if they come get us like a box or two, and they just take it in there, okay, so I, I doubt, I doubt there would be a truck, maybe a van at the biggest.
A van?
If, if, if you see, like, right now, you'll see some deliveries that have been going around across the state and things of that nature, they're usually small vehicles, they're not really big vehicles at all.
Yeah, because one of the things that the town is, you know, is concerned about is some of the infrastructure around the Wright's Mills complex, so, you know, trying to improve it to support business development around there, and, you know, the weight of trucks, and, and the, the usage of, of some of those streets over there, we'll see some, some definite use and some, and some wear and tear throughout more, it being more developed over there. So, you know, that was just a question that I had, and, and have you guys discussed, or it came up with a plan with regards to, you know, water usage, wastewater for, for the actual building?
I have, I come, my consulting here, Marcus, could you play, take his question, because he's very good, he knows all the ins and outs. He's actually, he's taken a social equity class, he's an economic empowerment license holder as well, and he's very well-versed, he's actually been a consultant for Grip, it's a little over my head, if you could...
Yeah, definitely. Should, should I stand?
Uh, yeah, you can.
Hi, everyone, my name is Marcus Williams, like Albi said, I'm, I'm an advisor for Grip Cultivation, I actually currently work in the industry here in Massachusetts for the past three years, with a company called Community Growth Partners. We do have retail in western Massachusetts, as well as cultivation and product manufacturing in North Hampton. You know, prior to working in this industry, I've been good friends with Albi and Eric for a long time, so obviously I have a lot of personal interest in seeing them not only get their business started, but also seeing, you know, this type of a business model progress in the industry, you know, one that's very community-minded. So, you know, with that being said, just to kind of answer your question directly, what we're looking at operationally for water usage is, number one, as many methods as we can to recycle water, which is something that can be done, you know, via equipment, you know, reclaiming, condensation from HVAC and things of that nature, so that way, a lot of the water usage can kind of be zero-sum. Secondarily, we've talked to Charles about the, I guess, the local aquifers here in the area, which I'm not too, too familiar with, but if, if there is a way to tap into, and we'll do some of this analysis, environmental analysis, if there's a way to tap into the local water resource optimally, you know, that, that's something we do want to do, is be as regenerative and as sensitive to the environment as possible. So, you know, we're, we're still kind of in the initial phases there, but there are a lot of, you know, developed methods for cultivation companies to really optimize water usage, and of course, you know, we're, we're gonna lean to the town to, to their preference, or just, you know, making sure we're doing it in a way that's compliant and favorable to the town.
In, in being at, you know, you know, a cultivation, I would imagine electricity is, is also got to be somewhat of a, of a, of a significant plan and an issue that needs to be addressed, right? Does it have enough electricity over there to...
Yeah, yeah, we, we did the site survey, I mean, there, there's probably some panels that need to be upgraded, you know, it's usually a three-phase power, but we do feel like the electricity output will be sufficient as well. It's usually electricity, water, and HVAC are kind of like your, your truck back there, like, like any companies, more so for cultivation.
Okay. And do you, do you have an estimate cost for the build-out?
Um, so the first phase, I think we were at like one point two to one point three million, and then as we go into the next phase, hopeful, hopefully prices will come down with the merge of the, you know, inflation right now, and just having supplies, we're kind of, we just don't, I, I wouldn't know what the second and the third phase would look like at this moment right now.
So initial total capital investment, about one point two million?
Um, actually probably more than that, the initial, definitely.
And, and just to piggyback off that a bit, I mean, we are looking to get revenue positive in this first phase, and use some of that operational funds to fund the additional phases as well.
Okay.
Okay, good. One second. All right, do you have anything else?
No, sir, I'm, I'm okay for now.
Okay. Trying to think. Do you have anything else to add?
No.
Any questions?
Joe, Joe Conrad?
Joe Conrad, President. With most of the Wright's complex, you could probably hit good groundwater at fifty feet.
Nice. Okay. He used to work there for a long time.
Oh, yeah, thirty-seven years.
We get a lot of, a lot of... We get a lot of, a lot of locals that have a lot of knowledge of that area.
Thank you.
We've been, we'd love to leverage that as well, a lot of that local expertise.
Exactly.
Okay, very good.
John Mason, resident as well. I'm a little bit curious about the positions. He said there's twenty positions of a minimum of sixty percent would probably go to local townspeople. Could you elaborate a little bit on what those positions entail? I mean, are we looking at a test facility or might need some technicians? Are we just talking grow facility or need more manual labor?
Mostly in cultivation, um, right now.
I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, you gotta identify. Probably mostly in cultivation to start off, but, um, as we move into further phases, we'll have the testing and a few other positions available.
So the cultivation would include things like trim, things like harvesting, you know, big job, packaging and things of that nature. So basically almost like working on an indoor farm.
Seems to be a lot of agricultural experience in this area.
Got a lot of farmers in this area. You're gonna, you're gonna have some, some good applicants there. Does anybody else have any more questions? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I was curious, is, um, with the building being in operation, is there an odor that gives off into the community? They're coming in my backyard.
And, and we would actually put odor mitigation in there. You, you know, we don't allow the odor to be leaving the area. So they'd have to be putting some sort of controls in there to prevent that, and that's actually within our bylaws.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney, what's her name?
Teresa Melvin.
Thank you. Sorry. Yes, if you could please say your name before your address so we know who you are, okay? Thank you very much. Any more questions? Any more questions? So this is just the initial opening. And the, basically the meet and greet, you're telling us who you are, what you're about. Getting some basics from us. The nitty gritty is gonna be, you know, really coming up when we start looking into the host community agreement. And identifying, you know, how your building's gonna be built. Cameras, making sure you have cameras in the building. A lot of this stuff, you're gonna be working with the chiefs to identify too. And making sure that all that stuff's taken care of. And I'm sure you've already talked with the building commissioner. B J Church?
No.
The building inspector? Okay, so she, you're gonna want to work with her too about the building too to make sure that, you know, what you're doing can be done. So I would open up those conversations too and start getting these people included here a little bit. So they at least know what's going on. Because they probably have some better insight and they help you.
Thank you, thank you.
So. May I ask what, what starting pay would be for one of your employees that you hire from our town? Have you thought about that?
I wanna say the pay scale run, that salary runs from anywhere to like forty-eight to fifty-eight. I wanna say it's somewhere in that range because it deals with assistance and then there is, is lead, so I, I wanna say.
So between forty-eight thousand and fifty-eight thousand to start?
Yes.
Okay. And will you be offering healthcare benefits and all that stuff for new employees?
At this point, I do not know.
I'm just asking some questions.
I would try my hardest, I, I would, I would, as a, as a owner, I would try my hardest to make everything possible. So that, that, that's my goal, to make everything possible for the residents and, and for the business because we want to do good business at the end of the day. And we want anyone who works at GRIP to be happy and want to stay there and we can, and they can take care of their family. I want you to, if you work with us, you gotta be able to take care of your family and everybody's okay. We don't want you to work with us and you gotta go work another job, no. You work with GRIP, you're okay.
Very good, very good. All right, um, all right, I don't think I have anything else. Do you?
No, sir.
Jim?
No.
Anything from the public? Any questions or anything? Okay, anybody from Zoom have any questions? No? So this is the first part of our meeting. We're gonna do a motion to continue from here, okay? Sorry. What was your name again?
Brent Bass.
Brent. So Attorney Bass, do you have anything, questions or concerns with, from the board before we continue the hearing?
To go on a few things, one of the ones you had mentioned before that I don't know if it was addressed and we kind of had different views on the question. When you were talking about the infrastructure and the capacity in that area, was the concern related to the daily operations? Or more to the build out aspects of it? I would have to believe that when you guys go to develop the property from an industrial capacity, there's probably gonna be some heavy trucking. Bringing in your equipment, your trays, your hoses and those sort of things. So I didn't know if that, your question was adequately addressed.
So I'm, I'm not sure if you've been over to that area yet, but you know, there's several little bridges that, that get over to this seventy-plaskey area. And a lot of them are not in the best of shape. So depending on, you know, the heavy and the amount of use of traffic and the, the types of trucks that will be, you know, going in and out of there on a daily basis. I would imagine, you know, what type of impacts does, does, does GRIP cultivation see as, as, you know, for that?
Yeah, and I, I think Albi mentioned it a little bit in passing, is that on the daily operation side, you really are talking about like commercial vans. So you're not exceeding a gross weight of a couple of tons. As far as, again, when it is being developed with the landlord and the owner, obviously we'll have to get with inspectional services and look at the postings. Make sure that nothing is going in there and its gross weight is gonna disrupt or potentially harm those bridges as they go in. If they have to do mini loads to get that stuff in, they'll have to make the adequate arrangements for the destiny. And then. With regards to security and those sort of concerns, obviously a huge one given the product. We'll definitely be in touch with the local chiefs, making sure that they're not adequate, but they'll tell us what would make the best sense. So we do feel that the location of the building is helpful to address some of those issues. And the fact that there is not a retail component associated with it and that there is not public traffic. We do hope that that's gonna minimize some of those safety concerns, but still go through all the usual protocols of cameras, security, services, details, that sort of thing. But we would definitely make sure that we address that with your chief of police and fire.
Yes.
Just to let you guys know, girl, you already know, but police is right across this.
I was very aware of that.
That was our mitigating.
They'll be close.
Exactly.
If, if any, you've probably got to be one of the most protected marijuana growers in the area. They'll be driving by you all the time, so. So do you have anything else?
No, again, like I said, the next step really is that host community agreement. We'll, we'll be in touch with the proper people. Like I said, you guys have the experience where you've done one before and our office has certainly done them before as well. And we'll just make sure that we take care of the community concerns in the best way possible under the structure that's provided in those agreements.
And, and we already have an agreement. We can, now that we opened up the dialogue, we'll send that off to you guys so you see what it is. And we'll have, we'll have our lawyer touch it up first before it goes over to you. And we'll send that over to you, okay?
And if I can, I will, you would like, just business card.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That you can pass along my information to the town council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So.
I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
And this is also includes Charles. Maybe you can help with that. I know at some point, building commissioner is gonna get involved in operations and talking about cars and parking spaces. You said you're gonna have like between twenty and forty people. That means there're gonna be forty, fifty parking spots. How many parking spots are there? How is it gonna be divided? I'm sure you're gonna have some use for that parking for other buildings over there, so I, I'm.
Yes.
What I'm trying to is, hey, you guys have to talk about this. How many parking lots are you allocating to each vendor, you know?
Correct, correct. I'm Charles Robson. I'm the authorized representative at the location at the former Wright's Mill. The calculation, I guess, would be based on the zoning requirements. I think currently there are greater than a hundred spaces in that lot at the moment. And certain spaces have been allocated for the police department. So the residual amount hopefully would cover the requirements for their activity, but we would have to run those calculations.
Yeah, I, I encourage you guys to do kind of like a mini master plan of, you know, just so you don't run in trouble later. Because the building commissioner is gonna say, you know, do his calculations according to the code and say, well, this much of square footage, this amount of people, how many bathrooms, et cetera. Or you need fifty parking spaces.
Well, I, I agree. I think that the engineering requirements need to conform to the building code and that needs to be authorized by the building inspector. So we will start with engineering first and.
Yeah, it's like a heads up.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, so do you have anything else?
No, sir.
All right, you guys are all good. It was nice meeting you all. Thank you for coming out tonight. We look forward to working together in the future here. Again, welcome to the town and hopefully you can find a nice place to live. There's a lot of good areas.
Looking forward to it, looking forward to it.
Between Warren and West Warren, definitely find your nice house around there.
I'm getting comfortable here, you know. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So I'll do a motion to, well, when do you guys think you'll be ready? Because we have to pick a date to continue to.
I think a realistic date would be sixty days from tonight.
Okay, sixty days from tonight.
Depending on how the town schedules their, their meetings and something that will lead us into July.
Can we go before that?
Are you think you'll be ready?
Thirty days?
Yeah. Definitely.
You're gonna be ready in thirty days? You wanna split up and say forty-five days?
I usually like to be conservative, but if they're gonna be, I don't want to shut down the client if they think they can be ready.
No, okay, so if you're looking at thirty days, you, you're looking at June sixteenth?
After that.
Give him the twenty-third?
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
You wanna do twenty-third? Okay. All right, I'll do a motion to continue the public hearing for GRIP cultivation LLC till June twenty-third.
Second?
All in favor?
Derek Bellis?
Aye.
David Dufresne?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. We are continuing.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you all.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay. Next up, emergency, emergency management supplies and. Control bleed kits in the buildings. So you got Jim? Not you, that was Jim. Lots of Jims. How you doing? So, excuse me, what do you got for us tonight?
Emergency manager, director, certainly. Back in two thousand nineteen, maybe you even get that E P G grant. Go one for your kids first. So I purchased twelve of these. Yeah, about dozen of these. They come in a case. Two of them went to the police department because they didn't have a case. They went to go to bear and erasers already. So my plan back then was to get these mounted on the walls or entryways or uptown buildings. Back then, before the pandemic, there was more control of bleed. MEMA was promoting these classes around too. That's why we got these, of course, we've been changed for the last two, three years here, so we're kind of behind. But I'm looking to figure out where to put these. In buildings or if.
So what's contained in the control, bleed control kit?
There's.
Are they like tourniquets and stuff or is it just Band-Aids?
Yeah, some gauze. And they got the instructions too. Yeah, yeah, tourniquets, gauze, gloves. Basically to stop, there was, say, a shooting, mass shootings or a serious mass casualty or something. In buildings and schools and stuff and that's why before the pandemic, it was kind of triggered. Everyone was promoting these.
Very good. So, thank you very much for getting them because, you know, again, having a, a tourniquet could definitely save somebody's life. You know, I know as police officers, police officers carry them now. It's kind of a standard thing to have on you now, especially if you got a active shooter response kit, you have your tourniquet in there. And that's, again, if, God forbid, anybody was shot, you could stop the bleeding. So, good, good cause, thank you very much. As far as where to put them, where were you thinking about putting them? What was your suggestion?
I was thinking about kind of in the common areas of like this building here, senior center. Maybe the highway building, Baytown buildings. Even the lobby of the police station, I don't know.
Okay. So I have no problem with them being installed in the buildings. I think it's a good idea. You know, it takes some practice to do a tourniquet. It'd be great to have first aid classes done within the buildings. You know, I've talked about doing, you know, employee-wide like first aid and CPR. Because we've talked about having A E Ds in the buildings too. And I think that's a good thing to have because, you know, the quicker you can get somebody response, the quicker you could potentially save them. You know, so I'm definitely in a support of any of that stuff. So you just want permission to put them in the buildings?
Yes, you're.
Do you have any questions, sir?
No. I think that's a.
Any questions from anyone?
Yeah, twelve of them, right, Jim?
Uh, yes, we had.
Would they be mounted on the wall or?
Yes, they could be. They'll be mounted right on a wall here. They got holes and screws on one of them and stuff. We just have to keep an eye on, make sure there, nothing happens to them or can do that.
Anybody have any questions about? Yes, sir.
I'm not so much a question or a comment. Yeah, John Mason, resident. I, I support the idea wholeheartedly, but I used to be a first responder, a first aider. And along with that came a great deal of training. And insurance liabilities if the wrong people access the kits. Ministerate without having the proper training to do so. So that would be my biggest concern. We would put a program in place to do the training and that program should be in place prior to. The equipment being installed. And that would be my only concern because I think it's a great idea. Same with A E Ds, but that comes with training as well. So that'd be my only comment is what's our plan to get people trained up?
Mr. Chairman, actually, I was gonna mention that in my, in my report tonight, John, was that we have a officer. was that we have a officer that has volunteered to do first aid CPR classes, right? Is that, is that right, Chief?
Yes, that's my officer. There is an officer in Spencer. We got these, I got a grant with Chief O'Donnell for one of these kits in all the, the schools in Engage Classroom, and we put on training. And there's a police officer in Spencer that's a trainer on Stop the Bleed. So if that's something that you guys are interested in, I can get ahold of him.
Yeah. Be good, Jim. See, see, is it going to cost us anything?
We probably have to pay him, yeah.
But our officer won't cost us anything?
Our officer won't cost us anything, won't cost us anything.
Okay. Yeah, we can definitely, I, I believe setting up training, I agree with you, John. We should have some training because people, a tourniquet is something that you need to know how to apply it. You have to be trained on it. It's not, some, somebody's not going to break out the instructions and start reading how to do it. To do it, you know? In the end, I'd rather have anybody try to put it on me to save my life. At least try would be good, but ultimately you want somebody that knows what they're doing, that it's done properly. And I think it's valuable to have for the, the employees here. So I think having the kits and having a training program together with it would be a great addition to our town here. So, yeah.
Work on getting that day. And then maybe I can coordinate with you, Jim, as to, once we get everybody into that training, then you can put them up?
Yeah.
Or, yeah, wherever you want.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you want to, we'll do a motion, I'll do a motion to allow Jim to put in the Stop the Bleed kits, and we'll also have have a police officer come by and start doing training. We'll set up training programs so they know how to use these kits. Okay? This way, we're good with everything, right? So my motion?
I wonder.
Oh, you have a question? All right.
Well, I just did a quick search, and there's a lot of information online how to use these kits. So, you know, if you install them and everything, we can add to the page some links that you suggest with the proper.
I guess the other thing too, we could make, you know, for trained responders only. Put this on the case.
We can also, you know, have, stick a QR code over there so if it's needed, we can link one of the training videos and they'll use their phone and boom, we'll get the training, you know, if it's necessary. But I guess we just hear from everybody here and just, you know, first, let's get them on, on the wall. Just find the training. Chief is going to do the, a lot of the training.
Well, you guys want to find the training first and adopt.
Yeah, let's, let's, because it's not going to do anybody. People aren't even going to know what to do with them unless they have some level of training. And you really should have the training before you, you put them up and start implementing it. Just to cover all bases, you know, I agree with John. It doesn't do anybody any good if nobody really knows how to use it. So we should train our employees how to use them too, so. And we'll just let them know, hey, you know, we got these going up in our buildings, and this is what they are, and boom, they're up on the walls, so. All right? So I'll do a motion, so to allow Jim to install the Stop the Bleed kits and for us to start up a training program for the Stop the Bleed kits.
For our employees.
For our employees.
Second?
All in favor?
Derek Bellis.
Aye.
David Dufrain. Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Good. Okay. Anything else, Jim?
And the second part of it is, we've got a lot of these N-95 and KN-95 masks.
Okay.
That got, uh, we ordered from MEMA. I've got a couple rounds of them through the last couple of years, and I've got a lot of them stored upstairs right now. And I kind of want to make them accessible to the public, putting them maybe, you know, some offices around, Port-au-Prince, Town Administrator's Office, just if someone would like them.
Yeah. Yeah, no, definitely. The masks are definitely welcome.
Yeah, shields too, you know, we've got some of them. Those are probably more geared towards police or fire if they need them. And if they need more masks too, I got them.
And then, I know the libraries were looking for some of this stuff too.
Any, if you can think of any churches, libraries, public groups, Boy Scouts, whoever, you know, because I guess the numbers are starting to kind of rise again here and there and.
I know the libraries were looking for. If, if you can reach out to the libraries, see if they need some stuff because I know they put it on, they put it in their budgets, but we got so much of it that we don't need to buy the stuff right now because we got so much of it through grant processes and stuff.
That's what the purpose is, to try to let everyone know.
And let's, let's use the stuff that we have now versus buying new stuff. You know, it doesn't make sense to just purchase a whole bunch of stuff that we already have, so. All right. Anything else?
This was, uh, we got some of the, we got like, almost like forty of these for our current last grant. They quickly go on cones to block off areas and whatnot. Close off areas, and some of them are different for, if we ever had to do the sheltering.
Yeah.
And also, just today I heard a, there was an email that came out. I guess MEMA's putting together another part of the EMPG grants, just like a side grant to it. And the EMPG grant comes out every year, that's the emergency management grant. We get about, just under three thousand for it usually. That's how I get designs and stuff. Well, I guess there is a program that, that, for generators for emergency shelters. So if a building became an emergency shelter, you could get a generator for it. I'll forward that email to you guys, so look at it a little more. It just came out today. I don't know if we could, for this.
For this building?
For this building, if it ever had to become a emergency shelter.
Yeah.
We'd have to kind of get a shelter plan set up, which probably wouldn't be too hard because you'd be using a gymnasium, possibly these rooms if you needed to put certain people in certain rooms. But the building would be able to possibly get a generator.
Okay.
Power and have it on the building.
Very good.
So that's just something to look into. I'll forward it to you guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I know we were talking about it before, is having this as an alternate because we want to have a backup plan to our backup.
Oh, yeah.
To make sure that, you know, whatever happens, we can, we can cover it. All right. Do you have anything else for us, Jim?
Uh, that's pretty much it. Uh, the biggest thing is the masks that, I don't know. Please let everyone know. I'll reach out to groups and stuff and make sure that everyone knows that they need something. Either email me or come to the town hall and we'll get them, so.
All right.
Get them what they need.
Great. Thank you very much, sir.
In the coming months after the training.
Thank you, sir.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next thing is, appoint. Appoint Jim Ferrara as the grant signing authority for invoices and bill payments.
I, I would ask that this be tabled to a future dating, uh, meeting when Selectman Iacca is here. This, this particular item came up as part of a, when we were doing our CDBG kickoff events this, this, uh, this week. You know, some of the questions around invoicing, they're, they're going to be changing the invoicing and how they do the CDBG grants, um, moving forward with CMR PC and, you know, to try to clear up some of the, you know, the, the time areas in which speedy of getting these things signed, that was brought up. So we can wait till, you know, when, when Rich comes back.
Okay. So we'll table that one till our next meeting. You good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So reports for fire and police, insert. All right. So for the monthly report for the police for April first to April thirtieth, you had one thousand seven hundred and sixty-one calls logged, twenty-four felonies investigated, seventy-four incident reports, uh, five on-view arrests, one warrant arrest, twenty-one summons arrests, uh, twenty-seven total arrests, protective, protective custodies, five juveniles arrested, eight motor vehicle stops, two hundred and twenty-nine, and motor vehicle citations, eighty-six. Guys have been busy that month.
Uh, yeah, we were, uh, we had that gun safety grant for truck stops.
Very good. Then. Vehicles, and you got approved at town meeting for the new vehicle.
Yeah, so hopefully you don't see six-eight on this report too much longer. That car's six-eight.
So you applied for two new portable breathalyzers? And a grant?
I applied for, yeah. Yeah, we have one right now, which makes it tough if the guy doesn't have it and it screws and he's stopping someone who needs it.
Yeah.
So I applied for two more through the state. They had an open grant for it. I haven't heard from them yet, so not going to, hopefully.
Good tool I have. All right. And then, you spoke at the school?
Yeah, we had Korea Day.
Do you just want to pop up a little bit?
Fire Department had.
Can, can you guys just pop up?
Sure.
I know you like to sit in the back and, you know. So people like to see you.
We were asked to go to Korea Day, Chief O'Donnell, and I had the law enforcement part of it. We actually had two full classrooms interested in law enforcement. The kids had some great questions on what they should do to, to enter into the field, which we answered. So it was, it was a good, it was a good thing at the guidance counselor's, but.
And you introduced yourself before you started, right?
Chief LaVoy.
Please cheer.
Thank you, guys. You're not in uniform, you know?
I know. I mean, come, you know, I had class today.
Still making it through the eighth grade?
It's tough.
It's a hard class. No. What class you have today?
De-escalation.
Yeah.
Part of police reform.
Yeah, okay. It's a good skill to have. Verbal judo.
Yep.
Topi Goshif.
Sir?
Yes?
Just a quick question. Chief, you still have access to that training I gave you years ago? Just about de-escalation?
From, from the sheriff's office?
Yep.
Now.
You should have, you should still have access to that. I'll double check, okay? Because you guys have free access to those courses.
Yeah, if you can shoot that over to me again.
Yep.
Because they were free and they were nice to just, to do them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll ask and find out, and then I'll make sure it's free for you.
Perfect.
A long time ago, I, I gave the chief some free courses for all the police officers. Just make, they, they're supposed to be free for, for life for them, so double check with them.
Okay. And on the line, the ninth, you attended some.
Yeah, that was all of us, actually. We were at the MVP meeting at the senior center.
Okay. And.
And then we conducted a mock crash.
Mock crash?
Yep. The, uh, the twenty-fifth before the prom. That was something we did. Couple reasons why we stopped, but, uh, we decided this year that we'd start back up.
Yeah, it went well, you know. We, we had stopped that for a reason, you know, given the tragedy that happened in this town and gave it a few years for some of those students to move out before we started to do that again. We're asked to come in, and it was very well received. It was, it was quite an event. We had a lot of compliments on how it went. I think the students took it seriously, and, uh, yeah, it went really well.
Very good.
Then at the end of the month, before COVID, Mass Chiefs was try, uh, put out this saying, they call it High Five Fridays. Of course, with COVID, you don't want to go shake hands or give high fives out. So now everything was starting to be lifted, we, uh, Mass Chiefs wanted to put that back out. So starting last month in April, uh, once, one Friday a month, we try and go to the elementary schools and when the kids come into the school, a lot of officers, they ought to give them high fives as they enter.
Very good.
Chief, don't forget to take a picture next time.
I know, if we have to take a picture, that was that.
Yes. This is stuff that you post out there, showing what you do, and you're out there, you know, helping the kids and stuff and being supportive to them, you know?
I thought of that afterwards.
All right. Did you have anything else?
Oh, just one more thing. Uh, on Monday, Officer Shea graduated from the twenty-ninth ROC in Boylston. I attended that, that'll be in my next report, but just so everyone knows, he actually starts back tonight.
Very good.
See him on the road.
So congratulations to Michael Shea. He was in Boylston, right?
Correct, yep.
Yeah. Boylston Academy, and I seen you guys, you and, you know, Officer LaFlower there.
Yeah, it was a great ceremony.
Very good to see.
That St. John's, what a high school that is.
Yeah.
Wow.
It's a expensive school, very expensive. My, um, my kid's godmother teaches there. So, uh, very nice school though. So nothing else?
That's it.
You guys have been busy. You have any questions?
No, sir, no, sir.
Okay. All right. Chief LaVoy, you're up. So you definitely had some stuff going on.
We have been busy, yep. We've had, our numbers have been, you know, climbing as they continue to do. Uh, we have done a lot of stuff in schools, um, safe programs and stuff. We contain a lot of stuff I don't put on there. We do do them every month. Um, you know, a lot of stuff we do put on Facebook, like the mock crash and things like that. We try to get the community, you know, community made aware of what we do. Um, so, you know, we, we did that. Uh, our juniors are doing fantastic. They continue with their, uh, at least monthly training. They've worked seamlessly with the people that we have in the day, so they've become a huge thing. We've had two other members that have joined recently, they're doing fantastic. So we actually are working with Quabog right now. We're putting together the next class for next year, and that, we have some awesome candidates in that, so we're pretty excited about it. It's doing really good.
Okay. Very good. So you had sixty-one, uh, sixty calls in April, and four of them were LS intercepts. You had seven smoke and CO inspections and one propane tank inspection. And you held two, four, well, first two of four total trainings to renew first responder certifications for all firefighters.
They have to go through that, excuse me, they have to go through that every three years. We have to renew their first responder certification.
Very good. And then, we all live the budget. You got that in there. Till next year.
Yep. Yep.
Good job. Did you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. And then, Jim, you have your cert report. Did you want to go with that?
Um, well, it's pretty straightforward there. We did sirens got tested. Our biggest thing, we actually had one of our first kind of trainings, cert trainings back. We did over CPR pressure. Um, and then we attended those MVP grant hearings.
Very good. All right. So, yeah, you guys tested the sirens in the town too, and everything's normal. You were there for the Lucy Stone Easter egg hunt?
Yep, yeah, Easter egg hunt.
Turned out to be a good event.
Yep, three different groups. Next year, they might have it a little closer together in hunts because the hunts only took like ten, fifteen minutes and then it was, yeah. Still, quite a few people came home.
Very good. All right. Hey? Did you have anything else there?
No, it's just we're probably gonna have meetings on the third Wednesday of every month up here in our room.
Okay.
Little trainings and go over a certain, like last night we set up cops, refresher.
Yeah.
Try to keep people involved that we have. Always looking for people that.
So you're still looking for volunteers, huh?
Yes, we have enough. We could try to get a training together.
So if anybody wants to volunteer for the cert team?
Yep, or if there was ever a shelter, be a part of that.
They should reach out to you?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have any information that you wanna give them to get ahold of you?
They can email me, mckean@warren.gov.
Okay.
Be the best way. I can converse back and forth with them.
Very good. Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
What are the requirements?
If you want, for the cert, full cert program, there's like eight different sections. There's search and rescue, psychology of understanding in disasters and stuff. And they're about like two hours each. And then there's another course too initially to take. It's online.
What about the age, age of individuals?
Probably looking at eighteen plus.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. So thank you very much, guys. You guys been working hard. Definitely appreciate all the work you guys put into everything you do. Alright, so warrants and bills. Typically.
Excuse me, Mr. Jones?
I'm a pass.
Nope. Yes, sir.
Actually, I go through service every day. I noticed that there are fire departments out in the open house again this week. Are we have any plans of doing something in the town here? Yeah, I mean, we exposed a lot of taxpayers to the equipment. You know, they're here in the budget meeting, what we're spending money on. Still really have an idea what it is.
Let him take a, let him take a truck for a spin. Let him see how.
Obviously, things are, we used, we've done those things before. We have done, you know, we have done open houses before. It's been a few years. Obviously with COVID, we were shut down. So you're just starting to see some fire departments do some of that. Certainly, you know, our plan is to, you know, finally for once, continue with the supper and get that stuff back online this year. So, you know, slowly we're coming back online. You know, right now you probably noticed we've been sprucing up the station. We got the bunting's up. We've done the landscaping. We got mulch down. We got all that stuff to kind of beautify the place for Memorial Day, so we're working on that day to day. But after that, would be a great time to probably have some, some people come in, open the doors and, and let people know some of the newer stuff that we have, some of the equipment, so they understand. I mean, the challenge is we have two stations, so it's tough to, you know, we have equipment at both, so we have to kind of incorporate both things, you know. But it's always a good idea to let people know what's coming up for replacement, what has been replaced, what's in the queue for that kind of stuff. Because, you know, we have several projects we want to right now. We have our Engine Five project that's in production. We have a new ambulance that's in production. We have the first installment at the last town meeting for Engine One, which is being replaced. That's a nineteen ninety-seven. So, yeah, absolutely, I agree with, you know, it'd be a great time even for bring police over and some of their stuff and some of the cruisers and everything, so we can certainly look at organizing something. And I think that, I think right now the numbers are up a little bit, but I think, you know, things are, things are looking better and that's probably something that we could do in the fall. Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Nation?
That subject, that's it.
Okay. Alright.
One thing to add to.
Yes, Jim.
So on July eighth, the Parks Committee is putting on a touch and truck event. Stand, police, fire, highway. It's gonna be at Dean Park for the concert. So some of the equipment will be out at the concert. Coming up, July eighth.
Hey, so warrants and bills. Okay, we got them all right there? Do you wanna go through them as I read them? I'll do a motion, just make sure they're accurate. So I motion to pay the fallen warrants, ninety-five payroll, forty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars and fifteen cents. Ninety-six vendors, two hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. And did we say we had to break these up separately or are we just doing them all together?
No, you can just do those two together, yeah.
So.
So, so you could do a motion on to pay the payroll?
Yep, we did.
Okay, alright.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes, so the warrants are paid. And now to bills. I know there was a question if we had to break them up because the warrants and the bills being separate, so. Okay, so on to bills. Turley Publishing, public hearing notice for poll hearing. That was seventy-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Turley Publication, public hearing marijuana established. That was a hundred and three dollars and forty-one cents. There was a correction to Joyce I-Hockers. The Zoom account and that's actually one fifty-nine thirty.
Was only for ten months, not twelve.
For ten months, not twelve, yeah. And Modern Pest, which is ninety-two dollars. Paul Shepherdson Electrician for the outlet in Park's office for AC. That's seven hundred and fifty dollars. Verizon, fourteen dollars and thirty-nine cents. Verizon, fifty-seven cents. National Grid, forty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. National Grid credit of a hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. And then National Grid Gas, and that's four hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Comcast, hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Warren Police Detail for Streetlight, the new Streetlight, that's a hundred and eighty dollars. Bay Path, that's eight thousand sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. And Mass Municipal Human Resources, that is seventy-five dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes. The bills will be paid. Okay, so minutes. We have no minutes. We're gonna deal with those next meeting. For new business, we got a, John's gonna love this one. KP Law sent us a, a note or a letter letting us know that their rates are increasing. So they're going up. Kind of expected this to happen with everything going up. That's why we want to make sure we prepared for it. And, you know, we're just gonna have to make sure we use them a little more diligently with Mr. Ferrari here. We can hopefully cut down these costs, so we're not relying so heavily on legal services for things of basic nature. We can actually, it won't impact us so muchly, so much hopefully. But yeah, legal costs are going up. Do you have any questions?
So, you know, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and with regards to that, I know the board has instructed me to try to keep a tab as to what exactly departments are requesting. So I did send out a memo to all departments saying that when legal is engaged, that I could be notified, so I can kind of track that to see that. So that tracking is started and has, is happening right now. With regards to the costs, this won't go into effect until July one of twenty twenty-two.
Alright, so old business. MVP. I don't have anything in there. So we have the MVP listening and then line item transfers. Those are all set?
So I, that was part of my.
You're doing that on your town administrator's brief? Okay. So I have nothing for old business, do you?
No, sir.
Nobody else is, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, the audience.
Town administrator report.
Yep, thank you, members of the audience and the viewing public. Just going into the town administrator's report for this week. Just, I, on a couple different matters that have transpired since our last time we spoke. One issue that was of importance that I think is, you know, that I wanted to make sure that the board is well aware of. It was brought to my attention from the town accountant that there was an issue of an encumbrance, okay? And the issue of the encumbrance was that the, the encumbrance was not, was not recognized at last year's special town meeting of, of May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. It was an, it was an article to transfer from regional dispatch to radio structural, infrastructural build project. The amount was transferred but was not encumbered. So the town didn't lose those funds. Those, those funds just got simply recaptured into free cash. So that was, that was rolled into free cash. The funds were a total of a hundred and twenty-two thousand. I immediately contacted the fire chief. I, I, I told him of the, of the situation, of the, of the error of the, of the encumbrance. And it can be corrected of two different ways. One, there could be a special town meeting called to transfer from free cash or the, the use of ARPA funds, which I think would, would, would flow more, more easily to that direction because we've already used ARPA funds for the radio project within itself. So, you know, that would be a suggestion. We are getting an additional allotment of ARPA funds. There's plenty in the account right now to continue the radio project and to move that forward. And we'll have those ARPA funds, I'm guessing by mid-June.
Okay.
With regards to this week, we had the CDBG kickoff season. And Chris Duffy was here with CMR PC. Tammy, Tammy was here, our accountant. The treasurer was here, Karen was here. A lot of the internal controls with regards to CDBG. There's gonna be a new system in terms of how to account for the backend of the grants. And I know Don, our treasurer, Don Swistak has, had kind of put together a, you know, a strategy for that. A very good strategy to, to track the invoices. They'll be sent to myself, the accountant, the selectman's assistant, so I'll have three separate sets of eyes on them. Claims will be filed by CDBG and emailed to the town administrator, the accountant, the treasurer, and the selectman's assistant. The selectman's assistant will create pay invoices to be signed by the board of selectmen. The selectmen assistants will logs invoices by grants and vendor amounts. The board of selectmen or the town administrator will approve the invoices and send to the, the appropriate accounts. The treasurer notifies the town administrator, accountant, selectman assistant in CDB, in CDBG when funds are received, pay invoices, and the treasurer will send check to the CDBG, CMR PC upon completion. So those are some of the processes that, that, that will be put in place. It's a little different than it has been done in the past. And we heard that from CMR PC about the change and that was kind of gearing us up towards for that change. So all the major departments were at this internal meeting this week to discuss this new process. I was notified by the treasurer on May ninth that we did receive two grants. The AED Equipment Award for the amount of one thousand six hundred thirteen dollars for Jerry. That, that was received.
Very good.
And also for, for Adam, I received the twenty-twenty VFA grant for one thousand eight hundred seventy-five that was received by the treasurer, so those funds are, are there. Just to kind of recap on line item transfers, I know John is here and we had a full finance committee board up there on Tuesday. It was, it was a very productive meeting, I thought, and I thought there was good discussion on all of the line item transfers and suggestions were made on how to improve moving forward. All of the line item transfers were voted in their entirety. However, two of them in particular were reduced. And the two that were reduced were from the board of selectmen's account. The initial requested amount was five thousand for cost of supplies, flagpole, paper, Zoom, ink, dividers, training, membership. The finance committee approved a reduced amount of fifteen hundred dollars for that account to be transferred in. The second one was for the board of selectmen. The amount requested was five thousand for adding more employees with email, Word, and also more computers for new employees. The finance committee approved a reduced amount of thirty-five hundred dollars. It's my understanding from, from what we got from the, the hearing that, you know, the finance committee is not necessarily opposed to looking at, you know, a greater amount or the full amount, but would need some additional information such as invoices reflecting the need for these associated costs. But every, all the other line item transfers were approved. The finance committee is going to be meeting again on June fourteenth. If necessary to look at more line item transfers requests, I will send out another email to all departments notifying that, you know, if you have a line item transfer request, that the finance committee was very nice and cordial with regards to letting the board of selectmen hear them first. So we're gonna, we're gonna continue that phase, so the board of selectmen could hear, hear before, before the fourteenth. And then the, the finance committee would act on the fourteenth on those transfer requests. I don't know, if I.
Yeah, I mean.
If I hit that right, John?
Pretty much right. The problem the finance committee had was wording such as other, where it wasn't specific into what we wanted to procure the money for. So it was too wide open as far as we're concerned. We'd like to see a little bit more detail, so we know what we're going on.
Just doing a due diligence.
Okay, so all, other than that, all those were, were taken care of, Mr. Chairman. Annual town meeting. I, I got the final number from our town clerk this week. She notified me that there was a total number of a hundred and forty-eight residents that participated at the annual town meeting. Here's a little bit of a past comparison of, of previous years. Twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty, being COVID years, were, were far off. Twenty twenty-one, there was ninety-two. Twenty twenty was a hundred and ten. Twenty nineteen, three forty. Twenty eighteen, two forty-two. Twenty seventeen, one fifty-six. And twenty sixteen, three oh three. So a little bit of a variation of past attendant records at the annual town meeting. So a little bit of a variation, um, of past attendant records at the annual town meeting. I am continuing to working, uh, Mr. Chairman, on this EV charging station situation. I, I, I haven't, I, 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 I'm like a, a dog with a bone here. I haven't let that go. I, I, I'm trying to, to get that whittled down as best we can. I'm still waiting for some additional documentation from Guardian.
Yeah.
They've discounted it somewhat, not nearly as much as where they need to be. So I am still working on that. And, uh, I just wanted to give you an update. They had, their labor costs, they're claiming for that particular project was 1,422 dollars. Uh, no, I'm sorry. The material cost was 1,422.81. Their labor cost was 4,556.41. And that's because they had to pay prevailing wage at that time. So, uh, and they're also trying to, um, claim a restocking fee of $2,500. Was $3,000. Now they're down to $2,500. So I'm still working on that. I, you know, it's gonna take some time on that.
Yeah.
And then finally, I, I met with, uh, the Assistant Town Clerk just today. I, I, I met with the town, I'm sorry, the town clerk, uh, today, uh, to talk about the Assistant Town Clerk's position. As, uh, everybody knows, we have a new town clerk and the Assistant Town Clerk's position has, is vacant, currently vacant. There's going to be a, a posting for the position. It will be on the, uh, website, the town's website, on Indeed, um, possibly the Where River News article, advertisement in the Where River News. And there will be a, um, a, a time for applicants to reply, uh, and to submit their resumes and cover letters. That's gonna be in the next coming up weeks. And then the new town clerk had indicated that, uh, she'd be, um, you know, she wants to interview them, you know, in the month of June and possibly have this person start, uh, the beginning of July sometime.
Okay.
So that's, uh, a little bit of an update on, over that, on that.
Right, very good. And we got an updated position description?
Yes, there's a new updated, uh, positions description. We went over that, uh, today. I will have a copy to the board, um, this week.
Okay. Yeah, that's one of the things we just wanna make sure is we update all these position descriptions. Everything's accurate. Karen's coming back. We wanna make sure everything's accurate and, you know, reflects the, the responsibilities and what they're supposed to be doing. You know, I think having outdated typewriters and things like that in your position description is probably not giving a good description of what you do.
Right.
Very, is that it? Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, through you. Could I just ask Jim while John's here? Is there a chance that, um, I had a, fortunately, I made the board and the town administrator aware. The very end of last week, one of my employees came to me, uh, one of my full-time employees came to me. He was injured at home. It was not work-related, but he's gonna be out anywhere from two to six weeks. Uh, we're still waiting. It's a week-to-week thing. He's going through physical therapy. I'm just a little concerned. I'm just wondering if the Finance Committee might be able to meet earlier than that only because it's four weeks out. And I'm, you know, in my particular situation, I have to cover his shifts with overtime and, and, you know, this is something that is kind of unexpected. I'm just a little worried about running four weeks out with covering a holiday coming up, Memorial Day and part-time shifts, that that may not give enough time to be able to do that. I'm just, I'm just asking. I'm just asking if there may be a way.
Jim brought it to our attention the other day.
What's that?
Jim did bring it to our attention the other day.
Okay.
We're aware of it, Finance Committee. Problem with the Finance Committee right now is two of my main members aren't available. That's why we put out to them on June 14th. Matt Little will have to come back from Vermont. And Andrea, who spoke at the meeting the other day, uh, has other commitments right now, whether it's personal commitments or home commitments or something like. So we had a whole lot of strings to get up and come in on the 14th, uh, to take care of the last-minute business. I can try. The problem I have right now, and I'll be quite honest with you, is, uh, we work in the email situation. But I went to our, our section of the website and I'm the only one listed on the Finance Committee. There is no email address to address the Finance Committee on that page. Cause I was gonna log in to see what was going on. So to access my people is a little bit difficult, difficult right now. I don't have, uh, contact information on the newest member we have. So right now, you know, we have four members, which is a great thing. We're growing. We'd like to grow more, audience. We're looking for more volunteers, uh, if we can get them. Because the more people we have involved in this and making these decisions, uh, the more rational they become. So it's, uh,
I'm just wondering.
It's a little difficult.
Yeah, I know, and I agree, John. I, I understand. I'm, I'm very glad the Finance Committee's up. Believe me, this is a long time coming and I thank you for everything you guys do. I just, this particular time of year is so important with transfers and this timeframe. I'm just wondering if we can't come up with a different way to be able to do it.
We did look at your budget, what you had available. We thought we had enough that we could continue on and then on the 14th, do the transfer at that point, push the money back in again.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I might make it. It's just, I didn't expect four weeks. It was, that, that's all. I mean, it, you know, that was more, I thought it was gonna be more like two weeks, not four. So it's gonna be, I mean, I, I, I have other employees that are gonna end up covering on the hall, especially because we have a holiday coming up. You know, I'm just, I, I'm just a little nervous that there's that, you know, that, that longer timeframe. I just didn't know if there's another way to do it.
The one option we do have is we could pull an emergency session because it is kind of an emergency, it's end-of-the-year business. We wouldn't have a majority to vote there if we did that, but we could still make a decision and move forward.
Okay.
I don't like to use that unless we absolutely have to. So if we come up with any other options.
I'll submit the numbers to Jim tomorrow so that he can work with you to do that. Like I said, this wasn't something I was planning for at the very, the very end of the fiscal year. So, uh, you know, I, I thought the numbers were great to get to that. I look back and they always have been, they're there and then it just happens. So, uh, it is what it is. I'll get those numbers to Jim and we can kind of figure out a way to move forward. I'll do my best, you know, as always, to try to fill shifts where I can and, and we'll go from there. I don't really see any other, you know, glaring things or issues that may come up if something comes up. You know, this is the, 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 the part-time and the overtime are the two I'm worried about because of this particular situation.
Understood. I thank Jim for bringing that up to us while we're,
Yes, thank you, Jim, for giving a hand.
Everyone at our meeting so far has been the town administrator and has been very helpful to us as well, so.
I apologize. I couldn't make the meeting myself. I was out of town, so, no, no, I apologize.
Understood.
Thank you, Jim, for bringing that to the board.
Yeah, no problem.
Hey, very good.
Yeah, okay.
All right, um, so, thank you very much for your report, very detailed. And, you know, I agree with John. You know, you've been an asset, you know, to the town so far. And thank you very much for all the hard work you're doing and, um, getting the details in these reports. And it's, I'm glad that you're seeing it and recognize it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I love working for the board.
Okay, um, so comments and concerns? I don't think I have anything. Do you have any comments and concerns?
I have a comment.
Sure.
So we, we all know that Warren has this, uh, free app, Town Alert. And, uh, just, uh, wanna make a comment. North Brookfield is, is joining Town Alert too. So if you're interested, you can, on your app, you can click North Brookfield and you will also receive their notifications.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it?
Comments, concerns? Comments and concerns?
I have, uh, I did my comments already. That was to ask for more volunteers for the, uh, the Finance Committee, but we also have the planning board, uh, or capital planning, I should say, that we need to get going as well. Adam, uh, and Jerry always try to plan ahead for the expenditures. Those usually go through a capital plan. I'm a little concerned about that $100,000 was unencumbered and we just stumbled across it. So, uh, stuff happens, we don't know that. But I'd like it to be looked into to see how we can prevent that from happening again in the future.
And so, uh, one of the things that we, we're, that I work with the accountant with is on these, um, encumber sheets, um, that she's, she's gonna be doing and she usually does every June. That will also allow for every department. So if there's a, if there's an article at the annual town meeting that, that funds need to be encumbered, uh, each department has to list that on, on these encumber sheets, along with any other encumbrances that the department feels that, you know, they have anticipated for, uh, for, to pay out at some point. These sheets need to be accurate and they need to be filled out correctly by every department. So it's, it is a, it's gonna be a system of checks and balances in which, uh, you know, the sheets will be reported back into, uh, the accountant's office. The accountant will verify and then make the adjustment, uh, on, on the back end. These sheets have always been out there, um, but it was not, for some reason, this sheet was not filled out accurately, um, last year.
Yeah, just, okay, so that's gonna be moved to the department's responsibility as well for even for articles on the town meeting? That's, I'm just clarifying.
Yes.
Okay.
If, if the board wants that.
I think we need to talk more about it.
All right, all right.
Cause I kind of wanna figure out what happened to it.
Okay.
I, I agree with John.
That's what I just wanted to clarify, cause that's,
We, we need to talk.
Yeah.
And, and I know you briefed me about this earlier today and kind of said something. And, um, yeah, I, I agree with you, John. We'll look into it.
And then, uh, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I have one question.
Sure.
And that's about the board reorder. I was always under the impression that was supposed to be in a public setting, that any meeting between the Board of Selectmen should be an open meeting. And decisions shouldn't be made behind closed doors if that is public information. And I would have loved to see,
So, so next, next meeting, next meeting, when Rich is here, we'll actually discuss it and discuss if we wanna reorder. I don't think anybody meant anything about, just,
I'm not saying,
we, we're just, there was no moves. So everybody's like, yeah, I'm doing where I'm at.
My suggestion on that is it allows the other selectmen, the junior selectmen, to get a taste of it and get exposed a little bit more to the public. And it's more of a training thing. I mean, really, the responsibility as a chair is one thing. And it just allows them to be, you know, cause we are rotating every, you know, every year we rotate up, uh, potentially rotate up. I'll say it happens. But it just allows the other board members a little bit more exposure to what the chair's responsibilities are. And it gives them an opportunity to address the public, you know, you know, more effectively and that's all. Nothing against who it is or anything like, that's your guys' decision, but it should be done in a public setting.
Yeah, we, we can do that next meeting. Yeah, it's just one of those things that, there were no, no new members added. So if, say if Joe, you know, got, got elected, we would automatically like, okay, let's reorg because we have a new person here.
Whether anything changes or not, that's the board's decision, right? But it should be done in a public setting, that's all. Just to keep.
We'll do that for the next meeting. We gotcha.
That's it for me.
Jim?
I have a question. Is the Finance Committee in the elected position or appointed?
Appointed. By the town moderator. So, just so everybody knows, thank you for the question. Anybody that would like to join the Finance Committee, you don't have to have a numbers background or anything like that. You just have to have a clear head. And, uh, Vinny McCarty, our current town moderator, is the appointing factor in town, so.
I'll consider it.
Good. Love to have you. And anybody else up there. And then maybe next step would be to get capital planning going.
Oh, now you're thinking big.
Maybe, we didn't expect a Finance Committee to grow that much. So, uh, if Finance Committee gets going, maybe I'll move over and start, try to get capital planning going. So it's not, you know, it's, we just need so many members on each board. So, uh, if we get too heavy on Finance Committee, we can always look for volunteers to go with the capital planning, which is another important department when we're trying to figure out, you know, Adam wants to allocate and appropriate money. Capital planning can help make sure that money gets encumbered as well, so.
Very good. So maybe you wanna do both?
It's doable as well.
And it's, it's my understanding that, um, uh, next year, we're gonna have to be looking for a new moderator because Vinny, um, said he was done. Uh, he's, he's, I don't know if he wants me to say his age on, on TV, but, um, he, he's a man that's done his time. He's given his dedication to the community for a very long time. And I think he wants to sit back and be able to relax and enjoy his life for a while. So there's probably gonna be a moderator position coming up here because Vinny is, he, he did mention that he wasn't gonna be seeking to re, get reelected, so. Which he's been great. He's definitely been great. All right. So any other comments and concerns?
Nope.
You sure you have?
I'm good tonight.
I do like the purple.
Thank you.
I like.
Oh, thanks.
So any comments and concerns in Zoom?
Yes.
Nope.
Uh, the only thing is, um, Mr. Chair, last week at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, the minutes that were approved were for March 7th and 8th. And there's no agenda for March 7th and 8th. There is an agenda for April 7th and 8th. So could you, uh, follow up on that?
Yeah, we'll follow up on it. Maybe, did they get marked around?
Must have been a typo.
A typo?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll check on it, Beth, thanks.
I, I looked to see if they were posted, but I didn't see them posted.
There was a meeting on April 7th?
Yeah.
Correct.
See one for, March 8th was a Tuesday, so I don't think that was, there was nothing then.
Were they executive session? We'll check into it, Beth.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, so no more comments and concerns? I have no correspondence. So we're to, the next meeting date is May 26, 2022, 6:00 PM. And do a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Dennis Bailey, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. We are adjourned.